...tonight, and really just kind of give an overview on both sides. What the school system is doing, the school community, along with working with the Newberry Port Police Department. We have Sergeant Greg Whitney, who will be here, answer some questions towards the end. Our SRO, Kyle McElroy, is here. And then Mike Tester, who's one of the chairs of our district safety committee. So what I plan on doing is just giving a brief overview for the people that are in the audience and the people that are watching, just kind of all the ins and outs that we do with safety planning for the school system throughout the school year and planning when we open up school. So tonight's agenda, we're going to quickly talk about creating a culture of belonging, which is essential, a part of creating a positive culture. Then we're going to get into the emergency operational planning for the district. We'll talk about the physical plant security tonight, give an overview of what the practices look like and the professional development that goes into school security. And then also really highlight the partnerships that we have with our law enforcement, emergency personnel throughout the school year. And then at the end, we did receive some questions that have come in through our Google Doc, and then also for any questions for the audience members. I think the first piece for us, and we've been talking about this, is creating a culture of belonging. So even before you can open up a book and plan for the school year, there's two areas that we really focus on. Number one, it's creating a safe physical environment for all of our students and staff, and then also create a safe environment, both for the physical and also mental well-being for everybody that's in our school system. And there's no single activity that really illustrates this, you know, highlighting a culture of belonging. It's really taking a look at, happens every day, and thousands of times a day, of working with our students and our staff through various activities, through culture, and just really working with the professional staff regarding creating that welcoming atmosphere for all students and staff throughout the school day. One of the big pieces that you're going to hear, and that we've heard throughout the nation, especially during crisis, is see something, say something. Well, it's very important to create that positive culture where everyone feels they are welcomed in the school system. Everyone feels they have a part of the school system. They're part of our community, from the students to the staff, to the administration, parents and families. Because that see something, say something only works when you create that environment where people take ownership of their school community. And we really pride ourselves in Newberry Port for really highlighting and working on that sense of community. So from the start of school, when a young person is welcomed into the building to the end of their day, the bus ride home, their experiences and the relationship of school and learning are really essential for all of us. And that's what we really want to create here in Newberry Port, is really creating a sense of community. We're all looking out for one another and our well-being. So there's been a lot of programming development that has happened over the past five years here. As we all know, our positive behavior intervention, our advisory programming that we have, the extracurricular activities that we offer for all students, student voice initiatives have been very, very important to us for the past five years, and bringing students to the table, and having students have a voice throughout the school day on all of the, you know, could be various rules, regulations, ideas, pep rallies, so they have a sense of ownership within the schools. We've really enhanced our school counseling services. We focus on alternative discipline, that restorative justice approach. So when a student makes a mistake, which happens in their high school or school career from kindergarten to 12th grade, we, sometimes we make mistakes when we're children, that our idea isn't to suspend and to isolate. Our idea is this discipline, but what we really focus on is really having the students make amends of their mistake. So we welcome them back into the community, which is truly essential when we're talking about creating that welcoming environment. And then really making trauma-informed practices, understanding that there's 2,100 students in the district that are coming to school every day, and that every single day, there could be challenges for families and students, and for our faculty to really recognize those students and provide the supports for the students and families when needed. And that really develops a culture where we normalize the support for mental health, and then all our students fully understand that we're going to have positive approaches to discipline, so young people look to the adults for support in their daily life here in Newberry Port. And as we said, that culture of belonging is really essential. That's the first pillar of creating a safe environment for all students and staff. The second piece that's really essential for us as we develop our comprehensive emergency planning is the operations. And we partner with school emergency operations plans. So we partner first with NEMLEC, which is the Northeastern Massachusetts Enforcement Council. And what they do is they provide a template to manage crises and emergencies of all natures that can happen throughout a school day. The other piece is, the idea of that and that planning and working with our emergency personnel is really to go over the multiple scenarios that can happen in a community during the school day. So by outlining the responsibilities and the duties of our district, school, school employees and students, where we all take ownership when we have to address any type of emergency that's in the school or within the community. So the emergency operation plans, the first piece is 911 access, contact information, school population and more. That's all part of our planning process in our emergency operations. And it's very detailed. The second piece is, is to really organize roles and responsibilities, from the administrative to the secretarial roles are defined. The multiple people within our school system will all have a role in various emergencies. So for example, what role might a nurse have in an evacuation? If we're evacuating a building, the nurses also provide medication for all students. So there's students that may have some medical needs that need to be addressed. There are also some students that may have medical needs, that they need accommodations to evacuate the building. That's just one small example of how a nurse is crucial if you're evacuating a building. But there's multiple roles, even for our secretaries, with information, with kits when they leave the building, and the attendants. And so when we're talking about emergencies, it can take on a lot of different areas. So part of our planning is, and these are just a few that we have in our plans and what we discuss, natural disasters, medical emergencies, fire, evacuations, death of a staff member, death of a student, there's violence in school, threat of violence, school intruders, utility malfunctions, and many, many more. From the officers and our emergency personnel, to administrators, to teachers, to students, we've probably, within the past few years, have experienced these type of issues. The crisis teams, we set up two teams. We have a district level, which is a higher level team, and then we also have our building-based emergency teams within every building. And as we look at the district, building base could be bumped up to the district, and the district could be bumped back down to the building, depending on what we're dealing with and what's in front of us. Part of all of these crisis teams is the constant communication with our emergency personnel, depending on what we're dealing with. Part of, as I was saying, the physical plant security, and part of the planning that we have in the summertime, is really looking at a few different areas of access control. So the first thing is building access control. Doors are locked after arrival and monitored throughout the day by maintenance and administrative staff. We have a video intercom system in the front entrances and also at the loading docks for all guests that are identified, you know, they identify who they are, what's their purpose of coming into the building. We have a staff FOB system, where staff key in and exit buildings, protecting access and providing us with ongoing record. This is one of the upgrades that we're looking at with Steve Burgholm, is taking a FOB system to the ID system. So the, almost like you scan IDs coming into different buildings. That's what we're looking to do, is use a student and staff ID, and that's something we're working on now. This new piece of technology that we're utilizing is a Raptor system that we just purchased for all buildings. So all guests will utilize this Raptor system. They have a picture ID, your license goes into the system, it runs a quick background check, and then prints out a visitor's pass with the photo and the ID of who's in the building and what their purpose is. Guests are also tracked throughout the system. So this is also being utilized in a few districts on the North Shore. We felt this is another great way of knowing who's coming into the buildings, and then also having the ability to track our guests. So this can be utilized for parent meetings, construction, anyone that's on school property will be utilizing the Raptor system. Building monitoring throughout the day. So we have video cameras in all of our buildings. This is another upgrade that we're working with Steve Burgholm, especially at the high schools. Some of those camera systems are a little bit older, so we're upgrading those. We're also adding more cameras in different areas of the building, at the high school and also at the NOC. Walkie-talkies is essential, so all administrators, teacher leaders, and designated staff have a walkie-talkie system, so at recess, at the lunchroom, on the third floor, second floor, that we're all in contact if there's an emergency or something going on in the building, where administrators need to pay attention to, or we need assistance, medical emergencies, things of that nature. Staff monitoring, and this goes back to that culture of belonging, where we all have responsibilities in creating a positive culture. So all staff is also responsible throughout the school day, make sure doors are locked, and this is also part of that culture of safety. And then Newberry Port Police Campus Monitoring. School Resource Officer Kyle McElroy is our school resource officer, from Marshal Murray to our lieutenants to Sergeant Whitney. Also part of our initiatives this year is the patrol officers that are on the day shift, have been frequently coming into the building, you know, developing that great relationship with the police department, so they're familiar with all the different schools in case there is an emergency that they need to come on school property. So they're familiar with the staff, familiar with the principals, and the campus. The second, another phase for us is part of our security planning and security is our practice and professional development. So things have changed, I think, throughout the years, when we're talking about safety, and our offices will probably address this more towards the end. But basically, when you're looking at the ALICE training, it's, ALICE, and we have it there, it's, you don't have to go through it, like, you know, A-L-I-C-E and follow that. It's multiple, in the sense that alert, inform, lockdown, counter, and evacuate. So they, it's not a systematic, I guess, template that you follow during emergencies. As we all know, emergencies can change on the fly. So when we're talking about different aspects of this type of training, we have a different, few different pieces that we share with the faculty and students. Number one would be like a hold call. So a hold call would be for a medical emergency in the building, so students would be held, so no one's in the hallway, they're not passing, and we could deal with, for example, a medical emergency in the hallway, if someone was sick or needed medical attention. A shelter in place is really, students would stay in the classrooms, they're not in the hallway. Shelter in place is for any type of natural environmental issue. For example, if there was a tornado warning, if there was a gas leak, any type of chemical issue, something around a building, where we wanted the students to stay in the, in the classrooms, not be going, leaving the building, coming in the building, or being in the hallways, so we can figure out what's happening. The other piece is secure in place, when we work with our students and staff. And then this could be something outside of the building. If you had a high-speed chase down one of the roads by the schools, this could be a bank robbery that happened in Newberry Port, this could be a home invasion, that we're in full contact with our emergency personnel. So a shelter in place is, once again, students would stay in the classroom, they would, teachers would continue to teach, and we just make sure that the outside perimeter and everything is secure. The other piece is evacuate, which we practice with fire drills. Anytime you're evacuating the building is when you would utilize this, could be, you know, again, if we had a gas leak inside the building and you needed to leave, any type of fire drill, or even if there was an intruder in one area of the building, you would evacuate the other area. And then the last one that we work with everybody is on the lockdown. So this would be where you cannot evacuate, where there's an imminent threat, that you're going to stay in the classroom in your typical lockdown drill, until the threat is, you know, dealt with or neutralized in that area. For us, for our school, fire evacuation, so this is what we practice four times a year in collaboration with our fire department, along with the police department. We have ALICE online staff workshops, and then we do three building-based drills in collaboration with the Newberry Port Police Department, and then we do an ongoing district level review of the safety plans. So the trainings have changed a lot over the years, and it's really working with students and staff, and it's developmentally appropriate. So it's more lesson planning and working with students than necessarily like actions that you may have heard, where people are fighting and training and all of that type of stuff. This is really empowering our students and staff to take initiative. One of the great resources that we utilize in this training is I'm Not Scared, I'm Prepared. And this is, resources you really utilize to empower students and faculty at all different grade levels. So as you're working with students at the high school, it's going to look a lot different than working with students at the elementary. But really just making sure our students and staff have the ability to feel empowered, where they can take action regardless of what emergency they're facing. That's really, really important for us, as we do those trainings with our faculty and students. And then the other piece that we really highlight is see something, say something. So the ALICE trainings reinforce that overall approach of creating that culture of belonging, and really emphasizing with staff and students and everyone in our school community, when they feel uncomfortable, or they hear something that they may think's kind of weird, to let somebody know. And that's all the work that we've done over the past four or five years, especially with our counseling, our trauma-sensitive schools, to really work with our students and staff when something doesn't feel right, doesn't sound right, just to let someone know. Really, and many times, we follow up and there's really nothing there, but it's really important for us, for all of us, to kind of watch out for one another. And that's what I really believe that we have here in Newberry Port. And just even going back through that, the entire pandemic, we were one of the few communities that stayed together throughout thick and thin, and I think we really did create that atmosphere of watching out for one another. And we take that same community approach to this type of training, that we're ready for all types of emergencies within Newberry Port public schools. And then our partners that are instrumental in really working with us is all of our state organizations, you know, from the state police to FBI, to all of our state organizations that support us. But on a daily basis, it's men and women in blue that are here in Newberry Port that work with us on a regular basis all day long. So we have the NEMLEC stars that I mentioned, we have Homeland Security. We also have, and I really want to credit District Attorney Blodgett. Throughout his tenure, he's always worked with schools, providing educational programming for all kinds of different, from texting to drugs to alcohol. His resources are phenomenal. He also has created, in all of the middle school and high school, CCI, which is our Community Collaborative Initiative. So every month, on the North Shore, in all the school districts, we work with assistant district attorney, we work with probation, we work with law enforcement, mental health workers throughout the region, and they really just give us, on a daily basis, keeping that communication open, but really can give the schools an idea of what they're seeing for trends and things that we need to be aware of. So that open communication with all of these partners is really instrumental, and I think for all of us, keeping our, you know, schools safe, creating that positive culture, and just really having the ability to depend on one another. So, and then the last two here, as I said, the most important, our Newberry Port Fight Department, and then the Newberry Port Police Department. All of our administration, from myself to the building principals, we are in constant contact with our local emergency response team, and that's also a great partnership that we have. And we do share information back and forth, and then we all work together in a collaborative way. So that's the, the big overview of kind of what we do in the schools, and I'll turn it over to the mayor and to our, the police department.
Sure, would you guys want to say a couple things first?
Sure, I'll, I'll pick up where the superintendent started off.
Can I, will you just move that microphone?
Yeah. All right, so again, my name is Greg Whitney, I'm a sergeant with the police department. So I want to thank the mayor and the school committee for having us here tonight. A couple of things that we've been doing, that, those daily walkthroughs that superintendent talked about, that really is important to us, is that, that culture of belonging, you know. Our officers now feel like they're a part of the school community a lot more. On any given day, from the city marshal on down to patrol, with the detectives, we have about 10 people on, and everybody's going through the buildings at least once a day. Everyone takes it at their own cadence, they'll go through, pick a school, they, most people do a different one on each of their shifts, so it's just kind of randomly out there, you know, lunchtime, class change times, and people start to get to know our faces, you know, we can do those kinds of, those physical checks, make sure the doors are closed, answer any questions that kids may have, students or teachers, whoever. And then, you know, it also allows us to have a lot of positive interactions with, with the different people in the schools. All our officers also have key fobs to those buildings now, so, you know, one concern in the past was if you've got an emergency in the building and if we can't get in the building. So now, that's no longer an issue, and then it also tracks who's going into which building. So, like I said, every officer is assigned a key fob with their name to it. As far as training, the entire department at this point has been trained in alert level one, so that, that's an acronym for, it stands for Advanced Law Enforcement Rapid Response Training. So that is our, basically our active shooter response training that, that we all participate in. We also have four officers that are certified as instructors, and most of the other departments in this area also participate in that training, because anytime, if we're going to have a major incident, we're going to have mutual aid coming from all the other communities. So we all train together, we all are on the same page as far as that happens. And then we also participate in the annual in-service, where we do things like implicit bias training, responding to emergencies of those with mental illness, suicide prevention, and cultural competency. So that's stuff that's really done on the department, department-wide that we do. Kyle and I also are both certified as school resource officers. We've done the NASRO training, which is the National Association of School Resource Officers, and that, that does the triad model, which is a law enforcement officer, informal counselor/mentor, and a public safety educator. And, you know, every, every year, we also participate in the annual school resource officer conference, where we're able to, to pick up on, on new trainings and new trends, and, and really talk to other people in the different communities. Turn it back over. So, any questions or anything we can answer?
Sure, well, thank you, thank you Sergeant for that. I appreciate that. Yeah, so, I mean, we really wanted to do this tonight, and I think we should probably try to do this at the beginning of every school year, kind of going forward, just as a check-in, because, I mean, I think a lot of the trainings that we do, do change quite a bit year to year, and I think we learn from year to year. Different incidents happen year to year that, that cause us to kind of reevaluate what we're doing in all of our buildings. So again, I'm thrilled that, you know, again, I'm thrilled that you came out tonight, and I'm glad this will now be taped for people to check out if they weren't able to check it out tonight, and we'll also get this presentation up on the website after this meeting as well. But the most important part, we want to hear from you. So if there are people who have questions tonight, again, we're, we're here to answer them. I think, I guess our best bet for a microphone is to come up here to the podium, ask your question, and we will ask them. So if you have questions, please don't be shy, and come on up, let us know what you think. We also have some questions that I think came in before, so...
Yeah, and I'll just, yeah, I'll, I can ask those, I can be those, and then we can answer those if you'd like, Mayor.
Sure. Yeah, you might want to grab that mic, like, just make sure that we're capturing you here.
Yeah, Sarah will come in and yell at us. No, I just want to reiterate once again, the police department really assisting us with that, creating that culture of community, because I think the more and more that the officers are part of the community, you create that sense of trust and comfort, where students and staff, when they are, have issues or there's information they want to share, it's just a lot easier way to collaborate. So one of the questions that came in, we didn't have many that came in, it was, "What research can be utilized and cited to weigh the mental health risk to safety benefit when considering implementing lockdown drills? I'm concerned about long-term mental health effects of teaching children to hide from shooters without substantiating evidence that it helps." I think for, I know on the school side, as you look at our emergency planning, it's really working with students for multiple emergencies that they could experience. You know, as I said, it's not just a focus on lockdown drill and, you know, an intruder in the building that could do harm. It's, it's a full range of different emergencies that can happen. But I think the difference between, and I'm sure the officers can assist, the trainings have really evolved to really, instead of practicing a lockdown, and I think before people would go into buildings, and then kids would be part of that whole type of training and defending, you know, mimicking a type of intruder, it's really taken that aspect of the mental health aspect, and really in small settings, working with their teachers, and really working with, I'm prepared, I'm not scared, working with students and asking, you know, what if this happens, how can we respond? And really taking the, the idea of being scared and really empowering the students and staff that they have an opportunity to, to really make a difference and take their own action, so they're not necessarily, you know, trying to fend off, you know, different simulations. So I think we take that whole aspect of talking about, from hold when there's a medical emergency, to if there's, you know, a tornado warning, towards, you know, other issues that can happen.
And ALICE is actually a really good program as far as, you know, decentralized decision-making, and it, it doesn't ask anybody to do anything that they're not capable of. So, you know, and ALICE's response is going to look a lot different at an elementary school than it's going to look at a high school because of just the capabilities of the students. And then, as far as what teachers are comfortable, you know, as the leader in the classroom, what they're comfortable doing. So it really, it does push that decision-making down, and I, I think some of the training and preparation can, can do that as well, and it's, it's really what the, the school is comfortable with.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment out there? Everyone's good? Sean, you want to see, do you have another question?
Question number two.
This was... This was at Brezner Hand, and during lunch and recess, this person had a concern if anyone could walk on the playground behind the school, from the side access road, a fence might be able to deter people from walking back there to stop kids, or stop kids from being able to walk off of school property. You know, what do you have in place for that from this question? So I think part of, when we're at recess and the monitors that we have, from the lunch to being outside, even to physical education, is the walkie-talkie system. The other piece for us, so if there was, if the teachers and the monitors are out at recess, and they see, you know, something, or someone that shouldn't be there, or an adult in the area, they can notify through the walkie-talkie to the administration. The other piece that has been great benefit is throughout the school day, our patrol officers are also on school grounds, patrolling, you know, patrolling those areas. So I think it's, I think for us, as a school community, it's always a fine line in the sense that, you know, schools are community-based. This is, you know, you want to create the atmosphere of belonging, but also you want to create the atmosphere of school, and not necessarily the atmosphere of, you know, a lockdown-type of prison-type of thing. So for us, it's really important for us to be making sure that our faculty and monitors have the ability to communicate with us, you know, when there is an incident, in a very, I guess, fast way, in the sense of they have concerns. So for us, when we're at the lunch, the lunch monitors, and during recess, and when physical education teachers are out with their students, they do have a way to communicate back to the schools.
Oh, here we go. Come on up. Just come up to the mic here, thanks.
Yeah, just a follow-up on that. So, I would assume the camera systems would capture both areas of that, so if there were an incident, you would be able to backtrack?
Correct. Yes. Yeah, that's a great question. So any, and we've utilized our camera system, that's a wonderful question. So part of the security cameras is, when there is, it could be a suspicious vehicle or whatever comes reported to us, we have a camera system that can pick up the cars or people that are on school property. Yeah, that was a great question. And that's the other piece that we've, part of our planning, as we're coming back in full swing with school, is really looking at some of those spots that we could say, "You know what, maybe we could have a camera here, because we're missing this angle." So for us, working with Steve Berkholm and the police, it's finding kind of those blind spots in different areas that we want to make sure we have a camera system in place. That was a great question.
And we are in the process, too, of upgrading the IT system at the police station, so we can actually monitor the cameras at the schools. So if there's an incident, it won't be that we actively monitor, but if there's an incident, we can, at that point, pull them up.
Any other questions from the audience?
I have to just have a follow-up comment to the question about the mental health impact on kids and a lot of this stuff. One of the areas that the district has really expanded and really focused on the last several years is beefing up our guidance, beefing up our counseling, training our staff in trauma and suicide prevention. And I think that, you know, I think it's fair to say that the staff are acutely aware. We've also been building up lots of relationships between kids and trusted adults. It's been part of our plan as well. So I think those things, they don't necessarily mitigate the normal anxieties that kids are going to have and that will have in these situations. But our ability to respond, I think, is really enhanced from what it had been.
Yeah, and I think that's also the focus. When you look at, you know, all the different scenarios that are out there, I think when people feel isolated, disenfranchised, they feel like they don't belong part of any community, I'm not even just talking schools. And there could be some underlying mental health issues. Those are the pieces that you really want to focus on, I think, as a community. So for a school system, I think one of the great things that we have done is that restorative justice approach. So when students, as I was saying earlier, if a student does break a school rule and there's disciplinary action that's being taken, we're focused more on bringing them back into our school community, and not necessarily suspending a student for five or 10 days, and then see what happens after that. So we really work with the students and the families, because we really understand that students are going to make mistakes. And if they are withdrawing, and if they don't feel like they're part of the community, as Mr. Menon said, we have enough counselors in place that we can work with that student and the family and address some of those things. Because, you know, that's our ultimate goal. If everyone's coming into the system, coming into the community where they feel like they belong, and they feel comfortable, that's half the battle. And it's not going to, you know, we all don't come into school every day in a good mood. But recognizing when someone starts to withdraw or feels disenfranchised, then those are some of the things that we really put a lot of resources in with that student and the family, provide the supports. So that's a good point. Yes.
So just to expand on that a little bit, what are, could you guys talk a little bit about some of the preventive monitoring that you're doing, sort of outside, things that are happening outside the classroom, outside school, like social media alerts that you might get from the community? You talked about your communication with other, both safety officials as well as mental health providers. Maybe you could just collectively talk a little bit about some of the things that you are doing to prevent things from happening, particularly, I'm talking about the tragedies that we all are aware of versus like a natural disaster, right? Maybe you could just, without too much detail, because I know you have to be confidential in some of this stuff, but sort of, what are your approaches to that broadly?
Yeah, and Mr. Testa can jump in too, but I'll go quick.
Okay.
I'll try. Well, I think, I think a lot of things that we're working with, with our administration and counselors, you look at, you know, attendance, you know, issues on a bi-weekly basis. So students that all of a sudden, attendance slips. We look at grades. We look at students who might be, may have been very active, and all of a sudden, starting to withdraw from different activities. So I think that communication with the administration, our mental health professionals within the system is beneficial. Then we also have really provided the wraparound services. We work with the Home for Little Wanderers. So if there's families that may, might be maybe uncomfortable working with the school professionals, then we provide those families for outside resources. But there are, I think, throughout the school day, our administration and mental health professionals are looking at some of those pieces as a first step of intervention, because we know once a student starts to withdraw, that's where people want to go.
And then, at the high school level, just over the last couple of years, school-wide, to just kind of take away the stigma of mental health needs and to be aware across the schools. So it's been a very active student-led group called Bring Change to Mind, which is now meeting during our advisory time. And then, that's a national program. And then also the NAN Project, which is partnered with our health curriculum and our health teacher. So those two very active student groups. And then through our Guidance and Wellness Department, we also do the Signs of Suicide SOS screening annually. And that's, you know, can flag students that just need maybe a check-in with an adjustment counselor. And then additionally, like Sean said, just the addition of staffing over the last few years that have been supported by the school committee. So we do have a pretty robust mental health counseling team now, across the district. And then as well as a behavioral health coordinator district-wide, which was another new position. So it's all kind of goes together.
And just to follow up on that, because I'm thinking also of police monitoring, you know, what you might be doing. If you are aware of a potential concerning post or something like that, do you feel like you have the resources you need to follow through with, you know, researching that? And do you have collaboration opportunities if you don't have the resources for that?
So generally speaking, when we have a, like, a threat will get brought to us, or something along those lines. And we essentially determine first if it's going to, is it a threat or is it threatening language? Because they, you know, they can be different, you know, and we really have to analyze, you know, are we threatening a specific person, place, at a certain time? You know, that's going to make it a much more serious threat than just something that's very vague. You know, you may have someone post a picture of a gun. Then you figure out, is that, is it a gun that they own that they have access to, or is it just a photo of a gun? Or is it, is it a, you know, like a BB gun, something along those lines? As far as, the biggest problem we have with investigating social media stuff is if it gets taken down, and then working with the social media companies themselves, a lot of times without a subpoena or a search warrant, they're not going to, they're not going to release that. Even if we were able to get that, it can take days, weeks, months. So, you know, just speaking very broadly, if we get a threat that comes in, you know, it's going to come in at the patrol level, whether it comes through the School Resource Officer, if it comes in after hours, we're going to analyze to decide, does this need to go to a detective or someone more specialized? You know, we'll reach out to the school, you know, make sure everybody's on the same page, if there's a mental health aspect to it. From time to time, you know, the threat will rise to a level of criminal charges, but there's always going to be a mental health aspect that goes along with that. You know, and generally speaking, that, that's kind of the place we want to go with it. But, you know, as far as like not having the resources, I mean, we're, again, we have the resources, it's just not the cooperation on the other side. And it's not unique to here, it's just, there's just so many things that come in. Snapchat's particularly difficult because of the disappearing. But, you know, a lot of times like screenshots are taken of like Instagram posts and that type of stuff. And we are able to get, you know, a pretty decent investigation right off the bat. You know, we sit down with the parents, we sit down with the student, we figure out, you know, what, how serious is this threat? Do we, you know, do we need to have the next day where we have some sort of a lockdown? Or do, you know, is that, is that going to be necessary? So, you know, every case is, it's so hard to speak, you know, how we would respond to it, just because every case is unique. But, you know, the biggest thing is when we do get those threats, we really try to go down that mental health road, because we want to fix what the issue is. And it may, like I said, it may bring criminal charges at some point, but a lot of times that's also a helpful way to get, to get it into the mental health arena. You know, the biggest thing too with mental health is just the capacity issues. I mean, there's just not enough counselors out in the community.
Thank you.
I would just, I would just manage, just to follow up that too, on the high school level, that, you know, this move to the Clipper Block, too, you know, you've gotten, you know, a lot more eyes on kids and touchpoints with kids than I think certainly there were when I was in school. And I'm sure that's really beneficial to, one, to get to know the kid, but like, make sure these kids don't fall through the cracks.
Yeah, actually, and then, and to the point of Clipper Block, which is our advisory that meets every third day now, it's actually how we rolled out some of the school-wide safety language this year, because it was grade-level, specific groups, small groups, like 12 to 14 students, with a teacher that will travel with that student year to year. So last week, in the middle of the week, just some of the terms that Sean was reviewing, like, hold, and the difference between a secure in place versus a shelter in place, and then, you know, lockdown versus evacuate. So they reviewed that common language, and also just gave scenarios as to when you might use each of that to, to really to the first question that Sean was answering about balancing these discussions versus like the anxiety you can cause of kids in a school to even have these difficult conversations. So try to do it in a safe space, like our advisory model. And then over the next two days, just ask every teacher throughout their whole day to have like a five-minute conversation, like, "If something went down and you were in my room, like, from this particular space, what would you do and how would you react? How would you lock down here? How would you evacuate from here?" Just to do it with comfortable people and familiar faces, and kind of build our way up to doing a drill, rather than just thrusting it on the 824 kids. Can be scary.
Yeah, and I agree. I think there's been a lot, you know, over all these years, you know, you, I mean, unfortunately, this generation is growing up with this, and, you know, my generation, I think, we didn't. So I think, I think sometimes the adults, it's harder for us to wrap our heads around this sometimes. But our students have grown up with this. So when we have these dialogues with the students, that's in the staff, it goes pretty well. And I think the idea is not, when you're discussing school safety in different scenarios that can happen with students, you don't want to create anxiety, and you really don't want to create fear. You really need to focus on empowering them so they can take action, you know, when there's a scenario in front of them. So they're not, you know, afraid of that. So I think that's, in Newburyport, that's how we approach that. We are, I think, very conscious of the mental health aspect and how that's being delivered. So that's why I think that small group discussion with a trusted adult, someone that they know they're teachers, is a, is a pretty positive way of doing that. The other piece is the district attorneys. So sometimes when we, you have the national, if there was a national tick-tock going across the nation, through the police department and the district attorneys, those are some of the trends that, you know, we'll, we'll hear from them. We also knew the vaping trends that were coming. There could be new, you know, substance issues for each community that they're dealing with. So those monthly meetings with the CCI team is also very beneficial, where we discuss those different scenarios. I'm just saying, I think we answered most of the questions. And the other, the third question is balancing the same topic, making sure you're, you know, protecting the kids' emotional health as you're discussing these different scenarios. And then, and then one just overall, like, how do you prevent, you know, all of these, you know, this last one, how do you prevent a lot of these different acts that you've heard, you know, throughout the nation? So I think we kind of summarized how you do that. To me, in all of my years as an administrator and teacher, and even a coach, it's creating that, that real sense of belonging. Because if we all feel we're part of the community, then we're more apt to look out for one another, and we feel comfortable going to a police officer, going to the superintendent, school committee, another student, a friend, and just say, "Hey, I heard this, it made me feel a little uncomfortable," and then pass that information on, and not just sit on it. So I think we have a lot of things in place that we're doing, I think, a pretty good job. It's something that's ongoing, you can always get better. But that's, that to us is really key.
May I add another question?
Sure.
Unless there's anyone else from the public?
Hello, my name's Sharon Kennedy. So I feel like Mr. Gallagher, at the beginning of the school year, you sent out an email about, I think it was something about families securing their guns safely, and it was the beginning of the school year, so I was getting a lot of emails, so I kind of glanced at it, but I was wondering if you could just speak to that, what that means, and what how, where the school, what the school was, why you were sending that out.
Yeah, I'm, the school committee, you can, did you want me to talk on that one?
I don't mind answering that one.
Oh, yeah, because that came...
So, we passed a resolution, the school committee passed a resolution related to secure gun storage, and...
Can you just speak up just a little bit?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know if we could turn off that. The mics don't actually pick us up, they pick up the home. So, so at the, we discussed at the end of last year, adopting a secure gun resolution at the, at the school committee level, and that was what was adopted ultimately, which was basically to practice safe gun storage in our community, so that we aren't putting guns into people's hands who will misuse them. And, and understanding that that's a critical part of gun safety nationwide. So, you know, balancing the ability to own guns, but with the ability to safely store them and have families be aware of the need for that. So the gun safety, secure gun storage resolution is posted on our district policies site, and the communication, I believe, that the superintendent sent out was just to alert families of that and to help them to understand, you know, this is a community-based approach, where we all have some responsibility in making sure our community is safe, and that some of that does rely on us practicing safe gun, gun storage at home if we happen to have guns in the home. I don't know if you want to expand on that?
Yep, that was, that was perfect. And part of that communication also provided like links for parents. Just as Ms. Walker said, you know, just really put it, as we, you know, making sure that the guns is secure for illegal gun owners, and so that was just something that we felt was also part of the discussion.
Any other questions from the audience? Remember Walker, did you want to follow?
Yeah, I just had a follow-up, sort of more detail, unfortunately. I don't know how, how detailed you want to get. But I, you mentioned the photo identification, I can't remember the name of it off the top of my head.
Raptor.
Yes. So, just in terms of how that will roll out, I'm assuming you'll have other forms of a, of photo ID that'll be accepted if a person doesn't have like a license or something that people who wanna...
Correct.
And then, you know, is it, does it mean, for example, if a parent has to like run to a school to drop something off, and they don't happen to have their ID on them?
No, no.
There'll be some accommodation for that?
Yeah.
Without putting someone at risk, but accommodating?
So, this, this is more for people that are in the building, for like a meeting?
Okay.
But for a parent to drop off at lunch, they're not gonna have to?
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, I guess, ability, related to that, will there be an ability to restrict access to different parts of the building? So, for example, if someone's given a Raptor ID to get into, for a classroom talk or something, they won't have like full reign of the building necessarily. Is there ability to do that, or is that another level that we just don't have capacity to do?
No, I think typically when you have people coming in to do talks, they're usually escorted with either the teacher or the students. But on the pass, it will have their, their name, where they're going, and where they should be. So, you know, it's just, it provides just another level of security. So, if people are walking around the building, it's supposed to be first floor office, and they're on the third floor, that would be...
Right.
And then, plus, we go back to the camera system, so you would see where someone's wandering.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone else? This is pretty good, it actually worked out. The time is actually pretty, pretty right on.
Yeah.
All right, so again, this was the first of, I hope, many conversations. I, I do think we'll probably get into a habit of doing this at the beginning of the year. I know we got a lot, I know City Hall got a lot of requests and questions around school safety, so I just think it's a good thing to do at the beginning of the year, and, you know, especially we have a lot of parents with, with new kids in school, and they just wanna make sure that our kids are safe, and it's, of course, you know, the number one priority of everyone, I'm sure, sitting up here and in the audience, that we keep, keep our kids safe here in Newbury Port. So, just moving forward, if you have questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. We'll close this hearing, but if you, you know, if you had a question and you didn't wanna get up in front of everyone and ask it, you know, we'll hang out for a little bit. We've got about seven or eight minutes or so before our, our business meeting starts up. But again, thank you for all coming out tonight, thank you for our police officers for coming in, thank you for all the work that you do. Mr. Testa, thank you for coming up and sitting up with this distinguished panel up here, and we'll, we'll close this forum. Thank you again for coming out tonight, and we'll be back in a couple minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, anyone else? This is pretty good, it actually worked out. The time is actually pretty, pretty right on.
Yeah.
All right, so again, this was the first of, I hope, many conversations. I, I do think we'll probably get into a habit of doing this at the beginning of the year. I know we got a lot, I know City Hall got a lot of requests and questions around school safety, so I just think it's a good thing to do at the beginning of the year, and, you know, especially we have a lot of parents with, with new kids in school, and they just wanna make sure that our kids are safe, and it's, of course, you know, the number one priority of everyone, I'm sure, sitting up here and in the audience, that we keep, keep our kids safe here in Newbury Port. So, just moving forward, if you have questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. We'll close this hearing, but if you, you know, if you had a question and you didn't wanna get up in front of everyone and ask it, you know, we'll hang out for a little bit. We've got about seven or eight minutes or so before our, our business meeting starts up. But again, thank you for all coming out tonight, thank you for our police officers for coming in, thank you for all the work that you do. Mr. Testa, thank you for coming up and sitting up with this distinguished panel up here, and we'll, we'll close this forum. Thank you again for coming out tonight, and we'll be back in a couple minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, anyone else? This is pretty good, it actually worked out. The time is actually pretty, pretty right on.
Yeah.
All right, so again, this was the first of, I hope, many conversations. I, I do think we'll probably get into a habit of doing this at the beginning of the year. I know we got a lot, I know City Hall got a lot of requests and questions around school safety, so I just think it's a good thing to do at the beginning of the year, and, you know, especially we have a lot of parents with, with new kids in school, and they just wanna make sure that our kids are safe, and it's, of course, you know, the number one priority of everyone, I'm sure, sitting up here and in the audience, that we keep, keep our kids safe here in Newbury Port. So, just moving forward, if you have questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. We'll close this hearing, but if you, you know, if you had a question and you didn't wanna get up in front of everyone and ask it, you know, we'll hang out for a little bit. We've got about seven or eight minutes or so before our, our business meeting starts up. But again, thank you for all coming out tonight, thank you for our police officers for coming in, thank you for all the work that you do. Mr. Testa, thank you for coming up and sitting up with this distinguished panel up here, and we'll, we'll close this forum. Thank you again for coming out tonight, and we'll be back in a couple minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, anyone else? This is pretty good, it actually worked out. The time is actually pretty, pretty right on.
Yeah.
All right, so again, this was the first of, I hope, many conversations. I, I do think we'll probably get into a habit of doing this at the beginning of the year. I know we got a lot, I know City Hall got a lot of requests and questions around school safety, so I just think it's a good thing to do at the beginning of the year, and, you know, especially we have a lot of parents with, with new kids in school, and they just wanna make sure that our kids are safe, and it's, of course, you know, the number one priority of everyone, I'm sure, sitting up here and in the audience, that we keep, keep our kids safe here in Newbury Port. So, just moving forward, if you have questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. We'll close this hearing, but if you, you know, if you had a question and you didn't wanna get up in front of everyone and ask it, you know, we'll hang out for a little bit. We've got about seven or eight minutes or so before our, our business meeting starts up. But again, thank you for all coming out tonight, thank you for our police officers for coming in, thank you for all the work that you do. Mr. Testa, thank you for coming up and sitting up with this distinguished panel up here, and we'll, we'll close this forum. Thank you again for coming out tonight, and we'll be back in a couple minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, anyone else? This is pretty good, it actually worked out. The time is actually pretty, pretty right on.
Yeah.
All right, so again, this was the first of, I hope, many conversations. I, I do think we'll probably get into a habit of doing this at the beginning of the year. I know we got a lot, I know City Hall got a lot of requests and questions around school safety, so I just think it's a good thing to do at the beginning of the year, and, you know, especially we have a lot of parents with, with new kids in school, and they just wanna make sure that our kids are safe, and it's, of course, you know, the number one priority of everyone, I'm sure, sitting up here and in the audience, that we keep, keep our kids safe here in Newbury Port. So, just moving forward, if you have questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. We'll close this hearing, but if you, you know, if you had a question and you didn't wanna get up in front of everyone and ask it, you know, we'll hang out for a little bit. We've got about seven or eight minutes or so before our, our business meeting starts up. But again, thank you for all coming out tonight, thank you for our police officers for coming in, thank you for all the work that you do. Mr. Testa, thank you for coming up and sitting up with this distinguished panel up here, and we'll, we'll close this forum. Thank you again for coming out tonight, and we'll be back in a couple minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, anyone else? This is pretty good, it actually worked out. The time is actually pretty, pretty right on.
Yeah.
All right, so again, this was the first of, I hope, many conversations. I, I do think we'll probably get into a habit of doing this at the beginning of the year. I know we got a lot, I know City Hall got a lot of requests and questions around school safety, so I just think it's a good thing to do at the beginning of the year, and, you know, especially we have a lot of parents with, with new kids in school, and they just wanna make sure that our kids are safe, and it's, of course, you know, the number one priority of everyone, I'm sure, sitting up here and in the audience, that we keep, keep our kids safe here in Newbury Port. So, just moving forward, if you have questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. We'll close this hearing, but if you, you know, if you had a question and you didn't wanna get up in front of everyone and ask it, you know, we'll hang out for a little bit. We've got about seven or eight minutes or so before our, our business meeting starts up. But again, thank you for all coming out tonight, thank you for our police officers for coming in, thank you for all the work that you do. Mr. Testa, thank you for coming up and sitting up with this distinguished panel up here, and we'll, we'll close this forum. Thank you again for coming out tonight, and we'll be back in a couple minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, anyone else? This is pretty good, it actually worked out. The time is actually pretty, pretty right on.
Yeah.
All right, so again, this was the first of, I hope, many conversations. I, I do think we'll probably get into a habit of doing this at the beginning of the year. I know we got a lot, I know City Hall got a lot of requests and questions around school safety, so I just think it's a good thing to do at the beginning of the year, and, you know, especially we have a lot of parents with, with new kids in school, and they just wanna make sure that our kids are safe, and it's, of course, you know, the number one priority of everyone, I'm sure, sitting up here and in the audience, that we keep, keep our kids safe here in Newbury Port. So, just moving forward, if you have questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. We'll close this hearing, but if you, you know, if you had a question and you didn't wanna get up in front of everyone and ask it, you know, we'll hang out for a little bit. We've got about seven or eight minutes or so before our, our business meeting starts up. But again, thank you for all coming out tonight, thank you for our police officers for coming in, thank you for all the work that you do. Mr. Testa, thank you for coming up and sitting up with this distinguished panel up here, and we'll, we'll close this forum. Thank you again for coming out tonight, and we'll be back in a couple minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, anyone else? This is pretty good, it actually worked out. The time is actually pretty, pretty right on.
Yeah.
All right, so again, this was the first of, I hope, many conversations. I, I do think we'll probably get into a habit of doing this at the beginning of the year. I know we got a lot, I know City Hall got a lot of requests and questions around school safety, so I just think it's a good thing to do at the beginning of the year, and, you know, especially we have a lot of parents with, with new kids in school, and they just wanna make sure that our kids are safe, and it's, of course, you know, the number one priority of everyone, I'm sure, sitting up here and in the audience, that we keep, keep our kids safe here in Newbury Port. So, just moving forward, if you have questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. We'll close this hearing, but if you, you know, if you had a question and you didn't wanna get up in front of everyone and ask it, you know, we'll hang out for a little bit. We've got about seven or eight minutes or so before our, our business meeting starts up. But again, thank you for all coming out tonight, thank you for our police officers for coming in, thank you for all the work that you do. Mr. Testa, thank you for coming up and sitting up with this distinguished panel up here, and we'll, we'll close this forum. Thank you again for coming out tonight, and we'll be back in a couple minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, anyone else? This is pretty good, it actually worked out. The time is actually pretty, pretty right on.
Yeah.
All right, Chrissy Platt, Becky Chapman, Alex Soro, Katara Harding, Bethany Granoth, Michaela Ayers, and Ian Leonard. Those are the teachers, and this, these are the captains of that team...
Oh, no.
...that are here tonight. So, I'd like to call up Noni Olson, come on up, Julie Malkow, and Janice Cahill. Come on up, man.
You're welcome. All right, look at that, that's the order.
I am gonna put this on my fridge. When I get it home, thank you. Thanks, thanks.
Thank you.
Let me grab a quick photo, we're over here. Once you guys get in the middle.
Okay.
Yeah?
The rose is...
Yes.
Get some middle.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll hand these other certificates over to Ms. Sokolowski.
All set?
All set, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. All right, consent agenda, let's see, Mr. Cole, are you, are you ready with the warrants for this evening?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
There's two warrants tonight that are in the aggregate. I move that the following name bills amounting in the aggregate $411,845 and one sent be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have one set of minutes to approve from the September 19th meeting. Are there any corrections? No corrections? Okay, all in favor? Oh, excuse me.
I move.
Yes, thank you.
We move. I second.
And a second?
Second.
Did you catch that? Sorry.
Sorry. Mr. Menon?
Mr. Menon moved, and I second. Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All set with that?
That sure was.
All right, so I would like to welcome back and introduce our student representatives. We have Olivia Hansen, who's a senior. She is, are you a current rep for the NEAF, or?
Yes.
Excellent, as well as president of the National Honor Society, a Best Buddies member. She works at Tinker House as an assistant art teacher, and teaches piano lessons and assists in directing a local children's choir. Is that GNCC by any chance?
Yep.
Love it. And we also have Avery Hawkeizer, also a senior. She's president of the German Honor Society, president of the National Arts Honor Society, a member of the National Honor Society, a member of the book club, and has been employed at Bob Lobster for the past four years. Nice.
Awesome.
What she looks for me.
So, whenever you're ready.
Okay, starting with an update from the Bresnahan, kindergarten went to Applecrisp Farms today. They learned about apples and tried the farm's apple cider. Zero the Hero came last week to celebrate the 20th day of school. Our youngest students practiced number facts with him. We can't wait to see him again on day 50. The whole school is still dedicated to PBIS. You can consistently see students modeling expected behaviors in all areas of the school. We will have our first school assembly on Friday, and Mr. RM has songs prepared for the music classes to perform together. We just wrapped up Dibbles' assignment, so targeted small group readings and instruction in reading groups will begin soon in each classroom. Teachers are diving into the My View writing curriculum, and continuing with the comprehension component of My View and Foundations. There are groups of teaching pi, teachers pioneering the co-teaching models at the Bresnahan, and completing the two-day training with Mary Gerling, a co-teaching and inclusion specialist from the Collaborative for Education Services. This model of teaching will transform the Bresnahan to create truly inclusive classrooms, and those teachers that participated are at the forefront. And from the Mullen, the fourth graders kicked off their school year with place-based educational program on a gundalo, which is a type of sailboat that is used to roam the Merrimack and the Biscayqua rivers by the thousands from the mid-1600s until the very early 1900s. They learn about our impact on the river environment, about some of the critters that live...
...
Mrs. Kennedy, can you take the roll, please?
May I win?
I'm here.
Ms. Paul?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Mr. Menon?
Here.
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Ms. Fothern and Mr. Callahan are both present.
All right, can we rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will turn it over to Vice Chair Hall.
Great, do we have anyone here for public comment this evening? All right, seeing none. Next up, we have a staff recognition.
All right. I'm gonna go to the podium because make it official.
Sounds good.
All right. Well, first of all, I just, once again, want to recognize our faculty and support staff. I was at a meeting today, and I think it's during the summer months when many people are vacationing, a lot of our faculty and support staff are coming to the district in the summertime and getting professional development, always looking to get better at their craft. So, we're recognizing some teachers tonight, actually sixteen teachers, that are really kind of the pioneers for us in the co-teaching model at the Brezner Hand. Principal Sokolowski nominated them to be recognized tonight. And what's great, it's some veteran teachers that not only are taking on a new challenge, but they're also great mentors for our younger staff. And we have sixteen teachers that we're gonna recognize tonight. We have three in the audience that are here today, and I'll call them up in a minute. But let me recognize the teachers, the sixteen teachers that are co-teaching and just really just setting a great example. And typically, co-teaching is two teachers in a classroom, a generalist teacher with a special education teacher, and they work together to plan so they can reach all students. And it's just amazing under Principal Sokolowski's leadership that this is happening. So, for our Brezner Hand teachers that will be getting certificates, and my name is on them along with Mayor Riordan, so they should be hung up on the fridge tonight, which is really important for us.
Hang on to those.
Robin O'Malley, Kerry Lynch, Julie Carroll, Caitlin Marsh, Nick Bouchelle, Kelsey Giovarci? Is that close? It's not bad, right? Yeah, all right, Chrissy Platt, Becky Chapman, Alex Soro, Katara Harding, Bethany Granoth, Michaela Ayers, and Anne Leonard. Those are the teachers, and these are the captains of that team that are here tonight. So, I'd like to call up Noni Olson. Come on up. Julie Malkow and Janice Cahill. You're welcome. All right, look at that, that's the order.
I am gonna put this on the fridge. When I get it home. Thank you.
Let me grab a quick photo over here. Once you guys get in the middle.
The rose is in the middle.
And I'll hand these other certificates over to Ms. Sokolowski.
All set?
All set, thank you very much.
Thank you, all right. Consent agenda, let's see, Mr. Cole, are you ready with the warrants for this evening?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
There's two warrants tonight that are in the aggregate. I move that the following named bills amounting in the aggregate $411,845 and one cent be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have one set of minutes to approve from the September nineteenth meeting. Are there any corrections? No corrections? Okay, all in favor? Oh, excuse me.
I move.
Yes, thank you.
We move. I second.
And a second?
Second.
Did you catch that? Sorry.
Sorry.
I move.
Mr. Menon?
Mr. Menon moved and I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All set with that?
That sure was.
All right, so I would like to welcome back and introduce our student representatives. We have Olivia Hansen, who's a senior. She is, are you a current rep for the NEF or excellent? As well as president of the National Honor Society, a Best Buddies member. She works at Tinker House as an assistant art teacher and teaches piano lessons and assists in directing a local children's choir. Is that GNCC by any chance?
Yep.
And we also have Avery Hawkeizer, also a senior. She's president of the German Honor Society, president of the National Arts Honor Society, a member of the National Honor Society, a member of the book club, and has been employed at Bob Lobster for the past four years. Nice.
Awesome.
What she looks for me.
So, whenever you're ready.
Okay, starting with an update from the Brezner Hand. Kindergarten went to Applecrest Farms today. They learned about apples and tried the farm's apple cider. Zero the Hero came last week to celebrate the twentieth day of school. Our youngest students practiced number facts with him. We can't wait to see him again on day fifty. The whole school is still dedicated to PBIS. You can consistently see students modeling expected behaviors in all areas of the school. We will have our first school assembly on Friday, and Mr. RM has songs prepared for the music classes to perform together. We just wrapped up Dible's assignment, so targeted small group readings and instruction in reading groups will begin soon in each classroom. Teachers are diving into the My View writing curriculum and continuing with the comprehension component of My View and Foundations. There are groups of teachers pioneering the co-teaching models at the Brezner Hand and completing the two-day training with Mary Gerling, a co-teaching and inclusion specialist from the Collaborative for Education Services. This model of teaching will transform the Brezner Hand to create truly inclusive classrooms, and those teachers that participated are at the forefront. And from the Mullen, the fourth graders kicked off their school year with place-based educational program on a gundalo, which is a type of sailboat that is used to roam the Merrimack and the Biscayqua rivers by the thousands from the mid-sixty hundreds until the very early nineteen hundreds. They learn about our impact on the river environment, about some of the critters that live in the rivers and their importance, as well as sailing and navigational tips, all while sailing the river. Thank you to fourth grade teacher Lake Cassidy and STEM teacher Kristen Daigle for organizing this amazing experience for our students. Thank you to the PTO for funding the buses for the trip.
Right, and now for the NOC, the eighth graders. Students are participating in a NOC speaker series, which connects and exposes our students to a bunch of different types of professions, and it engages the students' listening skills and ability to analyze information and formulate questions for the speakers. The seventh grade students will be participating in two PBE trips over the next two weeks. They will explore Maudsley and Joppa and begin to make real-world connections in their science and social studies curriculums. The sixth grade students will begin working with Project Adventure at the end of the month and engage in team-building activities that support the growth of the student. Students across the entire NOC have been collecting socks for our annual Socktober Drive, along with many students participating in cross-country, the Intro to Running Club, as well as preparing for the NOC fall play. And then on to high school updates, we have a bunch of student recognitions tonight. First is Ben St. Lawrence. He was a part of the annual National Down Syndrome Times Square video presentation and buddy walk. Ben has done work to raise money to support the Down Syndrome community. Through his participation in the buddy walk this coming Saturday, he was selected to have his picture displayed throughout Times Square, and we are really excited for Ben's recognition. And then Jennifer Missoni and Sasha Layden have done extensive work to de-stigmatize mental health through the Bring Change to Mind organization, which was talked about earlier tonight. And they will be kickstarting our local chapters that students have peer groups and resources to receive support around mental health needs. And then NHS would also like to recognize Liza Marino and Kelly McDermott for being named commended students in the 2023 National Merit Scholarship Program. And then last Monday, cosponsored with the Institutions for Savings, the College and Career Center held the Regional College and Career Fair. This year, there were ninety-five colleges and universities that joined, eighteen community organizations, and over two-hundred-and-fifty students and families, and they represented sixteen different high schools. It was a wonderful night with lots of energy and excitement around the college and career search process, and students and families engaged with the college admissions reps and community organizations, arming them with information and materials to move forward in their process for life after high school. NHS thanks the Institution for Savings, Spindrift, Sparkling Water, Aroma Joe's, Coffee House in Salisbury, Stonecrest Pizza, Pomodori Pizza, the Greater Newburyport Chamber of Commerce, Giuseppe's Italian Restaurant, as well as the Class of 2023 student families who donated food and water for the recs to enjoy. And then sports updates, the National Honor, not National, the Newburyport High School Athletics has earned the Boston Globe Division III Dalton Award for the second consecutive year. This award is given to the most successful high school athletic program in the state of Massachusetts. NHS has won two times in the forty-sixth year history of this award, just in case you missed it. Congratulations to our athletes, coaches, and athletic director Kyle Hodson for earning this great honor. And then our records for the season, boys soccer are nine and oh, and they are first place in the Cal. Girls soccer are nine and one, and they are first place in the Cal as well. Volleyball is ten and one, and they are also first place. Field hockey is six, one and one, and they are also first place. Girls cross country is three and oh, and it's also first place in the Cal. Boys cross country is three and oh, and it's also first place. And then golf is nine and three, and they are second place in the Cal. And football is two and two, and they are second place.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, of course.
I was excited to hear that Zero the Hero is showing up on day twenty. I thought the kids had to wait till day one hundred for that. Is that new?
Yeah, he's making multiple appearances.
Extra, I like it, I like it. Very nice.
It's probably the new math program.
Yeah, well, why not? Why not celebrate day twenty? All right. Welcome back, guys, good to see you. Thank you. So, next up, we have a proposed trip to Cuba for April 2024. We have a couple folks here to talk about the trip? Or one?
Just one.
That's good.
I am representing the International Club.
So, thank you for having me here tonight. So, it's kind of a different reason why I'm here, because of how this opportunity has taken on. Typically, we have all of the information about a field trip outside of the country, but that's not the case. So, it's a unique opportunity where EF Tours had reached out to schools that consistently do yearly trips and sometimes multiple trips a year, and us being one of them. And they are basically, what they had reached out to Aileen McConie, and they are offering a 2024 trip to Cuba. But the difference here is that only one school a week will be allowed into Cuba. So, it's fifty schools across the year of 2024 that will be, if they get accepted through the EF, that will be able to be a part of this trip. And so, this means obviously it's a little bit more competitive, trying to get a week that corresponds with one of our vacation weeks. And so, due to the relationship that Aileen does have with EF, they are temporarily reserving the April vacation week of 2024 for Newburyport. And so, in your packets, you do have the itinerary for the trip, but it does not include what the actual cost of the trip is, which is why I'm here, is that what Aileen is hoping to accomplish with the International Club is to be able to solicit interest in the trip. So, having a meeting in a couple of weeks to get a sense of how many students, families would be interested in pursuing this. And then what EF has provided us with is called the School Committee Guarantee, so which means that when Aileen does come back with all of the information and the students that would be, number of students that would be participating, any deposit that families had put down, if the school committee were to say, no, we're not accepting this trip, EF would honor those deposits and give everybody a full refund. And that's what the School Committee Guarantee piece is. So, I'm pretty much here asking for the International Club to be able to move forward with trying to determine and have their meeting to see numbers of families that would be interested in doing the trip. So, then that would allow Aileen, if there is enough interest, to be able to say to EF, we have enough interest so that we'd be able to lock in that week, and then we'd be able to set up a different time to come back and get the full approval from the committee. That's it.
Okay. Hang tight for a minute. Do we, I'm gonna ask you, Ms. Walker, as our policy rep, we need to make some type of motion to approve this trip?
Yeah, I mean, I think, so our policy, the policy that governs this, as Principal Wolf knows, is JJH, which is related to student trips that include late-night or overnight travel. It must have prior approval of the school committee. It does indicate in our policy that the things that we should consider include the educational value of the trip in relation to the cost. So, not knowing the cost, we're a little bit at a disadvantage, but it's not binding that that is, I mean, if we know enough and we have a sense that the cost would be, I mean, I think we could use our judgment on that one. They should offer, like I said, educational benefits to the students that clearly justify the time and expense of the trip. Such trips should be appropriate for the grade level. And then final approval would be granted, should not be granted until all preparations for the trip have been completed, including but not limited to all the logistical details. So, I think if we approve this, knowing that this is a preliminary approval and that we anticipate them coming back for the final logistical details, I think we just indicate that in our motion. That's my reading of the policy. So.
Great, I'm happy to make that motion unless there's further questions for Principal Wolf. Any other questions for Mr. Wolf at this time?
Just the usual question, which is, for those kids who are really interested but may have a challenge affording the trip, there will be some subsidies available.
Yes, just like we've used with all of the trips that we've run in the past.
I think I may ask a question for them.
And I do have to say, the Lydia Foundation, it's been really a great partner with helping us with that. So, just to throw that plug out there for that organization. The Lydia's Fund?
Do we really, I mean, do we have to make a motion? Or do we just say, sure, look into it, come back to us when, if it is actually interesting?
My understanding is you need some, do you need some kind of vote from us to just bring?
That we're able to at least move forward, because parents would be putting down a deposit, because that's what would be needed for us to secure that date in April.
Okay.
So, if you'd like to go ahead, I think some kind of provisional approval is appropriate.
Yeah, so I guess I would say, consistent with JJH, move to approve in a preliminary, preliminarily approve this, authorizing you to move forward with this trip to Cuba, with the understanding that you'd come back to the school committee closer to the trip to finalize all the logistics, and at that time, we would have another opportunity to do our final approval.
Okay.
And I'm happy to send that, those notes to Mrs. Kennedy, if that helps.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
Okay, so, Mr. Callahan is not here, so I think unless Mr. Cole, there's anything you'd like to say for finance?
No, I know the committee hasn't met since the last meeting.
That's correct.
Yep.
Move on to policy, it says, Mr. Cole, but I believe it's actually Ms. Walker is going to do. Is that correct?
Yeah, similar to the prior report, I don't have much to report, except that we will be continuing to start reviewing our, sorry, work with our MASC representative to review our policies. So, we'll be kicking that off, I believe, at our next meeting. And that next meeting, I believe, is in a couple of weeks on the twenty-fourth.
Great, Mr. Menon, any joint ed updates?
No, I don't. I don't know, maybe the mayor would know whether the city council has made.
Yeah, they haven't taken that up, yep.
So, what they haven't taken up is whether or not they want to continue to have joint education committee. So, I don't have any additional information. We met last week, I gave a report last, not two weeks ago.
Great.
Superintendent Val, very quickly, I have not checked in with Lisa Marie Apolito, or Assistant Superintendent, to see how far along we've gone, as soon as she's available. I will check in with her and report out in writing to everybody.
Sounds good. And Ms. Walker, transportation, any updates? We did get your minutes for the packet, thank you.
Yeah, I don't really have any other updates than that. We do plan to meet one more time, and then we'll have a report back to the full committee, probably the first November meeting of school committee.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, superintendent's report, we already heard about the Dalton Award.
I know. We'll pass that on. Great job, Dalton Report. Yeah, I just wanted to touch base, it was great. I did put it in the weekly memo of the school committee, but the open houses, it was great to have everyone back. And some sense of normalcy, the high school and the middle school, they did a nice job. They had a big assembly in the beginning, and then the parents and guardians went off to abbreviate the schedule. The NOC and the Brezner Hand had a different approach. They had the majority of their parents come in, see the specialists first, and then they went off to the classroom teachers. But just being out there and talking to the parents, there was just a lot of enthusiasm still with this school year, a lot of positivity. And it's been great to see students from the staff to the parents. So, so far, so good with the open houses. That was wonderful. And I think the, I have all my notes, but I just wanted to talk about the tennis courts, and they're beautiful, they're right outside the NOC Mullen School. I know a lot of work went into that for some of our parents. And then our partnership grant approved the funding for that, and it's already been utilized, people are excited. And once again, that group came to us, if you recall, in January 2020, throughout that whole process, and it finally got done. So, just a big thank you to the parents and Newburyport tennis group that assisted with that, and we're really excited. So, I just.
That was CPC grant, right?
Correct.
Yeah, they look great. Great problem, and kudos to Steve Burgholm for overseeing that project.
Yeah, I had my whole write-up, so. I'll do it to be continued for the next one. I have names to thank, but I don't want to mention any names without all of them, so.
And I do think we're gonna do some sort of like.
Ribbon cutting, I believe.
Ribbon cutting for that coming up.
Yes.
So, we'll let you know when we settle on that, because there's a couple more things I think Steve was trying to get to.
Correct. Just, I think, a final punch list, but it is being utilized right now, so.
People using it, it's great.
Yeah, and I think that's it, I just had a couple items from my superintendent's report.
Great, any new business?
I just have one thing I was gonna mention. You know, this was talked about at the last city council meeting, but I don't think we've spoken about it here. But Sheila Spalding did resign from the school committee. I just want to thank her for all her hard work on the school committee, her time here, just over three years, is that right? Nope, almost three years. But just a really great job, I would definitely call out her work on the policy committee. But, you know, again, I want to thank her for all her time that she gave to the committee. And that means that we need to fill the opening. So, just, there was, this is on the city website, and I don't know if it's on the school committee website yet, the information about the October twentieth meeting, but that meeting will take place at City Hall. I believe that's gonna take it at six o'clock, so it's the City Hall Auditorium upstairs. We're going to have a joint meeting of the school committee and city council. This was how I got on the school committee a few years back. I think Steve, this is how you originally got on the school committee too, right? So, how this works is it's a joint meeting. You know, whoever shows up out of these two bodies will hear from whoever has submitted a resume and cover letter to the clerk's office at City Hall. So, you can mail that in to Richard Jones at 60 Pleasant Street, or you can email him at rjones@cityofnewreport.com. So, we'll be taking resumes, I believe, until the end of day next Friday, is that right?
That's right, that's the fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
At noon.
At noon, because City Hall closes at noon on Friday, so we'll take those till then. And then we will have this meeting at City Hall the following week. It's a great opportunity, it's a short term, so you would fill the rest of Committee Member Spalding's term, which will run until December 2023. And any questions, please reach out to any of us here on the school committee or the mayor's office, we'd be happy to talk to you about it. But it's a great opportunity to get involved and really just, you know, jump in and do your civic duty and really get, you know, be hands-on as far as our schools here in Newburyport. That's all I wanted to bring up.
Thank you. Yes.
So, thanks, Mayor, for bringing up Member Spalding. And to comment on that in the policy committee updates, Sheila has been a great member to join the school committee and have her be very welcoming and very informed about, particularly about our policies, but generally about the school committee. And it's been really helpful to have her, as a new member, it was very helpful to have her sort of mentorship and assistance. And I think she has done a lot with the policies. It's very obvious that she's put a lot of effort and knows a lot about the policies, and I hope we will make her proud by continuing that work. And I just want to say that I think she brought, she offered a lot to this committee, and that'll be lasting, so appreciate her time.
I certainly, I certainly agree, I've enjoyed working with her. She has been an asset to the committee, to the policy, but just in terms of our dialogue and asking lots of very pertinent questions. So, I will miss having her here and wish her the best, but really enjoyed working with her.
Thank you, same. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to echo everyone's comments, but also add, or additionally, her work with C-Back was, you know, really helpful. And I'm sure our committee will identify someone else to take that over.
Yep, and I'd say the same. She's been a great, great supporter of the school system. And her tenure came in, right, January 2020. In March, we were dealing with the worldwide pandemic, so. You know, we've been through a lot, I think, as a school committee, and she was a great leader and gave great insight and advice to get us through, you know, those times. So, she definitely will be missed on school committee. So she definitely will be missed on school committee.
I just wanted to mention one more thing. The MASK annual meeting is coming up. It's November 2nd through the 5th in Hyannis on, on the Cape. I did register to attend. By registering in the summer with some help from Joanne, I was able to get an early bird discount. So it's my registration, but it's transferable, so please reach out. I'm happy to go. I'm happy not to go. If someone is really excited about it, we have.
I thought you were looking at me.
I'm looking at everyone. I'm just saying. We have a place for someone on our committee, and I'm happy to go, but I'm also happy to, to pass it along. So just reach out to me. There's a packet that lists all the different meetings and workshops that are happening. So if you're, if you're a member, you may have received that. And, but if not, I can get that to you. So another option for members is if there's a workshop that you'd especially like me to attend and report back on, I'm happy to do that. And then the last piece is that there are six mask resolution, there are proposed resolutions that we'll be taking a look at at our next meeting and voting on so that we can just share our, that would be our input at the conference. So we'll get those out to you as well. They'll be in the packet, but I'll try to get them to you a little more timely than, than that for your review before our next meeting. So that'll be a part of our next meeting.
Just for information purposes, in the past, we've run the gamut from voting no to voting yes to suggesting additional language to amend on the floor. So the ranges are there. We just need to be prepared to have the conversation next meeting.
Yeah. We talked about that right in the meeting.
Great. So I'll get those out to you. Anything else for?
Superintendent Goll, are you attending that meeting?
Which meeting?
That one. That's usually a masked, en masse joint meeting.
Uh, I think so.
Well, I'm sold.
I did, I have, you know what? I, I have, I have in the past, but they, I don't think I went to the last. The last one was like Zoom.
Yeah. They weren't in person last year.
This is their first time back in person since 2019, so it's exciting.
You were in person this summer, right? Did you go to?
We were in person down the, at the superintendent's conference.
Was that MAS C?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Right. And we'll be talking about that a lot more at the next meeting. I just wanted to give everyone a heads up. Any other new business? A motion to adjourn?
So moved?
All in favor? Oh, didn't get a second. Sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just a reminder, we have a tour tomorrow.
Yes. Tour tomorrow.
11, 10 o'clock.
Not 11. Don't show up at 11. It'll be over.
At the high, at the high school.
What's that for?